In the regular meeting.
Did you want to? You don't have to. Did you want to?
Well, you want to do it now or in the meeting?
The meeting will address the item as well, so there will be another opportunity.
All right.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Board of Commissioners' meeting, May 1st, 2014, at 7:06. Those who would, please join us in the prayer and pledge.
Pray with me, please. Most gracious heaven and father, we indeed thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for this community that we live in. We thank you for our many blessings of life that we receive. Tonight, I'd ask you to be with this board, guide and direct their decisions in a wise manner. These things I ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Next item is the approval of the agenda. I have a request here for an addition, for addition at 8C, new business, to discuss and/or take action on scheduling a workshop for Thursday, May 15th, at 5:30, to present a first draft of the budget of the fiscal year 2014-2015. I would like to also defer item 6C. There are missing pages, and would like that to be full page for the next meeting approval, please. And also, item 7B, to defer, there are no applications currently. Would there be any other additions or deletions this evening from the board?
Move it forward.
Motion and second discussion?
What's missing off of the March 6th?
Page 2, 4, and 6 must have been in the copy.
Talking number, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Citizens comments this evening? We have Ms. Jeanette Melendor. Welcome.
When I spoke to you about the library last time, I just have a few more things I'd like to say. One point that I made from last time was that having a library is an asset to the community and a draw for people, new people, and new businesses coming in. And at that point, I would like to publicly thank the new owner of McDonald's for his generous donation to the library for books. And I think that kind of points out that he is interested in a library, and others would be too. I just have a couple of statistics that I would think will be of interest to the board when you consider approving the addition to the library. Eighty-five percent of the registered patrons of the Fairview Library are citizens of the city of Fairview. And in March of this year, there were over 4,000 items checked out from the library. So, the library is used a lot, and I just wanted to point those things out, that how important the library is and how important a new addition is. And I hope that you will consider the expansion of the library.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do appreciate your dedication to the friends of the library. Now, Ms. Stark, your name was down. Would you like to speak again?
No, that was it.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, number four on the agenda is award and recognitions. Would there be any awards or recognitions this evening from the board? Staff?
Yes.
Public announcements?
Did I do something wrong? No, I was questioning the agenda.
Oh, public announcements?
Thank you, Mayor. Remind everyone of the mission testing Monday and Tuesday from 7:30 to noon. Also, I'd like to remind the citizenship that we are in the tornado season. We have a posting on the website, as well as on Channel 19. We are in the process now of maybe updating our emergency plan for storms or floods. And one thing I might add from the 2010 flood, we were kind of locked up here in Fairview and couldn't get out, at least during the night, because I personally couldn't get out of here myself without, you know, being in danger. Now, we do have 840. That would be an evacuation route in case we needed to be evacuated, that we didn't have then. So, I just wanted to remind everybody, and that will be part of our emergency plan. The next item I have tonight is I'd like Mr. Frank Humber to stand up. He's our new coach director, planning director, and I think y'all all know him, but I think it's going to be a big one.
Welcome.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor? I don't know whether it's now or later would be more appropriate, so stop me if you think I should do it later. But I just want to remind everybody that there's a vote on May the 6th, and that some of the polling places have changed, so please check your voter registration card. But please go out and vote. It is, in my opinion, our most prized possession as citizens, is the ability to vote. So, May the 6th. Thank you.
Next item is item 6, approval of the minutes. We have 6A, approval of the minutes from the February 20th, 2014 Board of Commissioners' meeting.
Move it approved. Second.
We have first and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Item 6B, approval of the minutes from the March 6th public hearing. What are the wishes of the board?
Move it approved. Second.
First and second, discussion?
Hang on one second. I had one, but I can't. They're all running together. Are we on?
We're on the public hearing.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item C was deferred. Item D, 6D, approval of the minutes from the March 20th public hearing?
Move it approved. Second.
Motion and second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 6E, approval of the minutes from the March 20th Board of Commissioners' meeting?
Move it approved. Second.
Motion and approval, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
F, approval of the minutes. Oh, any opposed? Sorry. Item 6F, approval of the minutes from the March 24th special call Board of Commissioners' meeting?
Move it approved. Second.
First and second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 6G, approval of the minutes from the April 3rd Board of Commissioners' meeting?
Move it approved. Second.
First and second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 6H, approval of the minutes from the April 17th public hearing?
Move it approved. Second.
Motion and second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 6I, approval of the minutes from the April 17th Board of Commissioners' meeting?
Move it approved. Second.
Discussion?
I have one thing, and it actually is on another one, but it's nothing to redo. But I noticed on there, like example would be when Tom does his presentation, so a couple times it says, I know one meeting was, let's see, February 20th, and then this one happened too. It just says financial report. If we can start getting, you know, at least what he gives us in the minutes, like either a copy of his PowerPoint, or maybe doing some kind of summary on that. So, that would be, you know, I don't see anything wrong. I just would like to make the suggestion that we include the financial conversations in the minutes. So, if anybody else, I don't know if y'all noticed.
Did everyone receive the item 9H via email that was omitted? Did everyone receive that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item 7A, old business, second and final reading on Bill 2014-06. Ms. Biata?
You want to go ahead and read that, please? It's an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee, located on Highway 96 North, near Interstate 40, owned by the McRedmond Family Partnership, as shown on the Fairview Geological Listing of Assessment Role Map 18, parcel 22, from RS 40 to CG Commercial General 25.87 acres. Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion? Would you like to speak, Ms. Biata?
If anybody has any questions to ask me, I just wanted to go over some of the, one thing, she said that it was surrounded three sides by residential, and it was not. The property that adjoins it on the east side has the access, and it is already zoned commercial, even though there is a little house on it. So, there is, you know, a lot of commercial around there, and its proximity to I-40 would have a tendency to just not be an excellent place to have a little residential farm. And its property's been on the market for over four years, and we have not had an interested buyer for that purpose. And in order for me to market it properly, it needs to be zoned properly, and even TBA works with us closely and said, if it is zoned properly, then we can move forward and try to find a suitable business. And when a business does come along, they will have to go through the proper channels of the city, and they'll have to be approved by the planning, and they'll have to be approved by the, by you. So, I just think that in order for me to market it properly, it has to be zoned properly. So, and it is already, I understand, under the commercial future umbrella, so.
I've got one question for you.
Okay.
I've been down that road just to check it out, and there's two houses down there.
I am not sure who owns the little house in the back.
The very back way in the back there?
Not sure who owns that.
So, would both of them be already zoned commercial?
I don't know about the second house.
Anybody know? Okay, that's fine. But that is not part of the land that you're talking about?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. I'm going to ask for a roll call there. Commissioner Sutton?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Nay?
Nay.
Thank you. Recording. Thank you. Motion passed. Item 7C, discuss and/or take action on Williamsport subdivision. I asked this to be put on there because I just wanted to give an update, and also wanted to inquire with the city attorney Cantrell if there be any updates. The public has asked on occasion what exactly is taking place in the timeframe, and I was not aware. I do want to give an update that I and my husband were interviewed today by the investigative attorney this morning, and she called on Tuesday and asked to have an appointment with us on Thursday. So, that was accomplished. So, that's my update on the information. Would you like to share with the board or the public anything that would be shared, please?
I'll be happy to share with you what I know. I have not heard from the attorneys that's doing the investigation since your meeting. The last thing I heard was that, to the best of my information, that one of the last things that they had on their list to accomplish was the meeting they had today. So, I would assume, and, you know, that's a dangerous word, but, you know, what, you've heard the old saying, what it does. But I would expect, in talking with city manager, that the report would be forthcoming within the next few days.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the board?
The only thing I wanted clarification on, I know during the, one of the meetings you had spoke of about the contract, if they received a contract, is, are we doing this, are we holding off because of the investigation? Is that what's going on? Because I'm a little worried that, you know, we had the discussion if they received a contract and paid their fees and stuff like that.
The board passed a list of items that was in the minutes that would have to be accomplished before they were going to reconsider it. Now, the board can reconsider it anytime they want to, but as it stands right now, that was passed, and one of the things was that this thing's going to have to come down, you know, and be worked out. I think, the way I understood the minutes, that it's probably going to have to be worked out before this board, or you may refer to the planning commission for recommendations, or whatever. Legally, from a standpoint legally, if they've got a contract, it would not influence what would happen in the thing. In my opinion, that's also one shared by the city engineer, whether the, if the house is there, has passed all the other inspections, it would not influence what, the ultimate outcome of what we're doing. Because you've got it for three houses, whether it's three or four, would make no difference in the legal ramifications. But when you issue the sale or whatever, the board has made a call on that, and I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not going there. That's not my, that's not my job. But it's from a legal standpoint, anything could be done with three houses could be done with four.
Okay.
And that's also shared by the city engineer.
Okay. And other questions, just out of curiosity, since we, you know, can talk about it right now. What about, has anybody met with the Toddis with the list of what needed to be done after, because at one point, they were supposed to have Joe Chapellane and the engineer, and they were going to come up with things that were going to be done. I was just curious, has that been given to the Toddis?
Not to my knowledge, but the...
Will, city manager hall?
No way, I'm not at this time.
I think that would have, we'd have to have the report back, that was something that's going to be forthcoming in a couple of days. And when that gets back, I think you could fast-track this thing as fast as the board wants to look at it, as fast as Mr. and Ms. Totti wants to look at it, as fast as you want to, if you want to look at something about the planning commission, as fast as they can get a meeting, even if it's a special meeting. Everybody sit down and come up with what has to, what has to be done, and what can be done.
Okay.
But we're going to need to see what the results of that report was.
I believe, I'm sorry.
No.
I believe we went over that one day with, in one of the meetings with Will, about the specifics of what needed to be done.
He gave a list.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure that that...
And I'm sure that, was that given?
That was emailed to all the commissioners, February 29th. Yes, sir.
So, that's out there.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
So, because of her position, she's got it, but no one's sat down with Mr. Totti and met with him. But the mayor got a list due to she was a Board of Commissioners.
That's, that's my understanding. I've got a copy of the list. I'm sure the city manager got one, and every board member got one. And that would be, you could not exclude the mayor because she has...
No, I'm not saying.
No, you wouldn't want to, but she's excluded herself from any vote that's been in there anyway, so.
Right.
But she still had a right to see it.
Right.
And I might add that the Asbuth drawings was done by their engineer, Randy Chapellane, and they took care of the payment for that. So, and that was what created the email back to each one of y'all.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board? Item 7D, discuss and/or take action on update of Fairview Library branch expansion. Ms. Dolores Greenwall?
Hello again. Hello again. I appreciate the time to come back before the commissioners again. Also, I really appreciate the support of the citizens of Fairview for this branch. I think it is important for the future of Fairview to have this, and I'm very pleased for the commissioners to ask me back, because it makes me understand that you guys also see it as an important move forward for the citizens of Fairview. So, I'm here to ask that the proposal that I discussed last time be split instead of 47, 50, 50 percent. So, we're very, very close. Not a lot of distance between 47 and 50. So, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, and hope that you will consider and vote for this expansion.
Mr. Johnson, would you like to speak?
Thank you. Ms. Greenwall, could you please explain to us and everyone listening what happened when you went, I guess, to the county? I don't know if you went to the library board, or the county commission, or the county mayor's office, or...
Well, I have, when something like this happens, I do have a lot of folks that I go and talk to. But what I was hearing from the trustees, as well as the commissioners, that they wanted to see a 50-50 split between the city of Fairview and the county to make this expansion happen.
Could you, could you share with us the figure that you shared with us at the last meeting?
The figure was, the part that the city of Fairview would spend would be $90,000.025.
What was the original, what was the original figures when we started this?
The original figures were around 74, 75. We bumped up the original request because the architect walked that property so long ago, and we were concerned that the building cost would be a little higher than what it was when he originally gave us that estimate.
Go ahead.
But we would also go through, if it's approved, we would go through a bidding process, an open bid, as with any kind of construction for an expansion project.
Would the county be willing to let the city do the bidding process?
I would think any, any construction group within the city of Fairview would be more than welcome to, to bid for the, for the project.
And people are here for it, and I'm for the library. I was, that first donation several years ago, that the library had gotten in several years, and people know that I am. I am trying to be a good steward of that money at the same time. And my concern is, at the current rate for 800 square feet, you're looking at over $200 a square foot for construction. That's extremely high, and it's not, I wouldn't buy a house, I couldn't afford to buy a house at $200 a square foot, let there like that.
It, it is a little, it is a little high, but, you know, it's also not determined that for this 800 square foot, that it's going to cost that amount. You know, it could be a little lower, or if the commissioners and the county wished, they could maybe expand that 800 foot to include a little more to cover the $91,000.
Ms. Greenwall, is this gentleman with you speaking on behalf of the library?
My Board of Trustees is here too. Jerry Bull is here.
Welcome, sir.
I've also spoken to you on the Sub G4, and I just wanted to chime in with a couple of points. I'm Jerry Bull, Fairview resident, and chairman of the Board of Trustees of the Williamson County Library System. The trustees have been 100 percent behind this project since I proposed it about two and a half years ago. Things don't move that fast, but the county has been really insistent, not just with library affairs, but with parks and rec, some, a couple of projects I'm aware of in Nolansville, that there's going to be a 50-50 split, or they aren't going to happen. And, you know, all we have is this working estimate from the property department. I agree that the square foot calculation seems absurd, although, of course, we're hoping to get, you know, if, I'd like it to be a thousand square foot expansion, if the money will cover for it. I don't actually know where the 800 square foot, per se, came from, other than the property guy giving that kind of thing. I also wanted to point out to you, I know there was some discussion about, you know, our residents are already paying county taxes, but everybody in the county is going to be paying for this Fairview expansion through their taxes to the county. And, and, you know, even like in Brentwood, they have their own library, and yet they pay 30 percent of the Williamson County property taxes. And so, they're going to be paying for 30 percent of this expansion when they have their own city library, and could care less about Fairview. So, you know, I don't think it's productive to start thinking about who's paying what, and all that kind of thing. And, and another terrific point, I think, is that the operating budget of the Fairview Library is over a quarter million dollars a year, 100 percent paid by the county, plus some, you know, money that we get from donations, our friends, groups, and so forth. So, it's a major operation and a major asset to our community. My wife and I moved to Fairview because there was a, a library on Main Street. And so, I solicit, you're just changing your vote to 50-50. And I think when we see the actual design and what we're going to get from our money, that we're actually going to be very pleased with that outcome. And if it, and if it works out to be $180,000, I'll be amazed. So, is there anything else I could add?
I've got a couple of questions for you. Does Brentwood pay a different tax rate than the people in Fairview for county taxes? Said they pay 30 percent of the county taxes.
I don't know. I don't know if they pay a different rate. I don't think so. I think the property tax rate is set...
I think the people in Fairview pay the same rate as the people in Brentwood.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I know what it's based on, the price of their homes.
But the only reason I said that is that they always bring up that they're paying 30 percent of the county's taxes, and yet funding their whole library themselves.
It reminds them each and every time that they pay the same rate as everybody else does.
Yeah, okay, I agree. I, I get that point.
The questions that I have on that is, you know, I, I have a problem with agreeing to an open end contract, and to me, that's almost what we're doing when we say, the last time it was $128,000, 50 percent of that. And then, without any, am I correct? When the original figure, about $128,000? Yes, it was. We did 64, so that was roughly half of it. So, it's gone from $128,000 to $191,000. So, I shared one from 64 to 90, which is a 50 percent increase. And I don't know, have we done any testing out there?
We haven't done any testing yet.
Well, the question is, how did we come up with an increase of 50 percent?
I, I don't know. We're just going by what the property management department of the county gave us as an estimate to work with. Unfortunately, I cannot...
I'm not arguing the point, but I want it done. I want it done. But just being stewards of the money that we have that comes down from the school fund, I want to make sure that we're entering into a fair agreement. You know where I'm coming from.
Well, absolutely. But will there not be, once, if we put out for bids, wouldn't there have to be, I would think, a joint approval of the project once the bids are in hand? And if it came in at no better than 800 square feet for $190,000, I think there'd be some debate about whether that would be approved or not.
And that would need to be part of a contract and agreement between us. I have no problem. That sounds good to me, as long as we have an input into the situation, but we have a cap on top of it to go along.
Oh, I think, I think we can promise you that.
And I really...
Because, I mean, I think the board would be failing, and it's, and it's why I do share responsibility.
I think we need a new library, period.
Yeah. So, all right, thank you.
You could put a cap on your motion, though. If they're asking for the $90,000, you can cap your motion at 50 percent cost at that $90,000 figure.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's what we were expecting. So, that would be fine.
If, in the motion, I would have to, we'll discuss it in a second, I would have to put a cap on it for, if I agree with it with the $190,000 and the 800 square feet.
I'm totally fine with that.
The gentleman that produced the document you're speaking of, would that be Al Ritter?
It's Keith Fines...
It's Chief Fineside who works with Al Ritter. And him and an architect that the county works with had just walked, came and walked the property and come up with an expansion for a construction group to the government of the X-Min.
Other questions? What are the wishes of the board?
I'm sorry to make Paul do an... It's, the motion on the floor is to approve it or for the ninety-one thousand?
Been no motion?
No motion, yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion that we meet the county fifty-fifty on the expansion library project with a cap of ninety thousand twenty...
Oh-two-five.
Oh-two-five.
Oh-two-five. Second. Discussion?
I'd like to amend that with, since that's what we're doing, that we amend it to the eight hundred square foot requested at this time. And the bids be open and we have final agreement on any plans that they have.
Second. Discussion on the amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The original motion of into an agreement of fifty-fifty with a cap of ninety thousand oh-two-five? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New business this evening, eight A. Discuss and or take action on State of Tennessee Electrical Contract Amendment. Mr. Hummer?
Thank you, Mayor. This contract, it's a revenue contract for the city. It's with the state of Tennessee. They are, they re... This is whereby they reimburse us for issuing electrical permits. All this amendment does is change the address of the codes department. The codes department address hadn't been changed since it was at the Public Works Building and so it just changes that. That's all that amendment does is change the address of the codes department.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? The only thing in discussion is, I highlighted with Mr. Hummer, and I don't know if I talked to Wayne at all, but my intent there would be, it does say Sharon Hall is the responsible party at City Hall. And my question there is, would that be more appropriate to have the city manager or the department head director? As we're making this change, would there be any positive or negative? Would y'all like to share on that?
I think we could make Frank Hummer the responsible person.
Not knowing exactly what would or wouldn't be the position of that person, I'm looking for guidance of...
Don't you agree with that?
Would a secretary be, I mean, is that just for correspondence for mail or is it conversations? Because electrical, I would think...
It's just the contact person, Mayor, with the city. The person who's knowledgeable of this contract and knows what needs to be done. That's what it's, that's what the contact person really is what it's about.
Okay. Comments from the board? Do y'all have a thought of it should be a department head in charge of discussing contracts for the city or the secretary?
You know, I kind of see your point, but I think a lot of times when it comes to this with her in the codes department, I mean, it's probably fine for her to be the contact person because she is going to go to Mr. Hummer if there's any question. So I, you know, it's just whether, I don't know that it matters. But we, it's just as easy if we're changing stuff to go ahead and put she as the contact person.
I'd like to amend the motion that it reads the department head of planning and zoning, Frank Hummer? Humner, sorry. Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The original, original motion was to approve the contract amendment.
Changing the address.
Because of the address? Any other discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Johnson, would that be something that you would take care of on that change and then have new signatures? Or was it just a line item that we were going to change and send out?
Yes.
Second. And at this time, with respect of family, my son is being awarded at a soccer field. We have one item and then discussion and I'm going to request to turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor, only because you've got to be both places at one time. So excuse me, please. Thank you, sir.
All right. New business B is discuss and or take action on the final version of Brazos Technology Proposal Software License and Maintenance Agreements for e-citation software. Commissioner Basile?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. A couple of months ago, we approved a participation in the governor's highway safety program grant at no cost to the city, but as part of that grant, we were going to purchase two e-citation machines and the related software, et cetera. In the process of processing the paperwork, there were three documents that needed to be signed, two of which got signed, one did not get signed. And Chief Sutton could not be here tonight, but my understanding from him and carrying this message for him, it was that we are simply reapproving what we've already approved and will this time get all three documents signed. The final that wasn't signed was the maintenance agreement that goes along with that. Again, there's no cost to us, but as luck will have it, sometimes it's, I guess it's better to be lucky than good, the actual price that the whole program has gone down. So for whatever reason, it was a good decision that we forgot to sign the maintenance document. So I make a motion that we reapprove the participation in the grant and approve all three contracts by which need to be happened with this organization in order for that to be done.
We have a proper motion and second. Larry?
If I may, the original of this, of the document, except for as Commissioner Basile said, changing the price actually went down, but the information and the requirements and the various commitments of the parties has not changed from the original. It just failed to get signed. And since it was a contract, even though the board had approved it, it had to come back for board approval.
Any other discussion? Are these documents available where I can sign them this evening? Excellent. Even better. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, new business, is to set a fourth, a five-thirty workshop for the first draft presentation of the budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I had been thinking some things over in my head and I believe I shared them with Commissioner Carroll the other day. And I thought that we could either start the regularly scheduled board meeting early or instead of calling this a workshop, a call, have a, call a special meeting for a budget hearing where it could be televised for the public. So I would like to amend the motion as such.
Second amendment.
Any discussion on the amendment? Yes, sir.
I could. I agree with that in its entirety. I think workshops have a purpose, but when we get to this point where we need to start making decisions, workshops do not allow us to make decisions. And there has been some requests to be broadcast. So by calling in a special meeting or by starting our other meeting earlier and including it, I think we solve both of those problems. So I would be for that in lieu of a workshop.
I believe the motion will just be to call a special meeting at five-thirty for the purpose of a budget hearing. And we will now vote on the amendment, which will take care of the original motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
City manager, we're going to have someone here to make sure we get it televised.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, that was it.
Televise the workshop?
Yes.
It's no longer a workshop.
Special meeting. I will make sure someone's here.
Just to make sure.
So the thought process is because it is budget, it is something that a lot of people have voiced that they would like to be able to see, that by doing a special meeting for a matter, a subject matter like this, then we basically can televise it and people can watch it from home and we can, it will also be put on the internet. So just to kind of explain.
It is, yes, ma'am. It'll be, it's a regular meeting, but it's a special called meeting and everything will be aired and televised and recorded and... And my thoughts on that go a little further just from the fact that Commissioner Basile had made several statements in the past about workshops are really not doing us anything. We are spinning our wheels. I have no problem if we completely eliminated workshops and then people can't say we're trying to hide things. If there's something that needs to be discussed, put it on the agenda and it's open for everybody. It goes out at home and we don't, and if we need a special meeting, call a special meeting. But workshops, in my opinion, could be a thing of the past, but that's for another discussion.
Well, and I agree with Vice Mayor in that it, to me, it's very personally frustrating that we, we can do everything but come to a decision. And so, so at the end of a workshop, we may have had some dialogue, but we did not decide anything. And so we tend to have to have the same conversation over again to get to that decision. And that's, that's my major concern with it, is that if we're going to get together, let's give ourselves the authority to make a decision. And that's what a special meeting does that a workshop does not. So I think we're all in agreement.
Anything else before we move on to item nine?
Just one more comment on it and Wayne, you can do it. As far as I know, I've been told tonight that U-verse is up and running, so take advantage of it. You can now use U-verse, which is, opens the doors to these meetings to a lot of people. So just while we're talking about doing that, just keep that in mind and gets news out if you want to through the media or whatever we do. Thank you, that's all.
Channel ninety-nine, is that correct? I think I heard that. What, am I right? Yes.
Thumbs up.
Yay.
Believe it.
All right. Item number nine, city manager items for discussion, miscellaneous updates.
Well, I don't have any updates tonight, except we do have, I've been texted by my daughter saying that U-verse is up and doing great, except for her daddy's not talking loud enough. So I hope that I'm talking loud enough for her to hear it. But anyway, we're glad that it's up and that's all my updates tonight as far as city managers.
Staff comments?
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Last month, we ran fifty-two calls and our new ladder truck is in. Had it out there to show off a little bit. With the new ISO rating changing, they're changing their whole ballgame July first. If you recall, two years ago, we had an evaluation, got a six to a five, missing a four by two and a half points. Okay? That thing, plus Gunny's Training Tower, which you've all seen, is going to help us get our four. We're going to come back after July when the new rules take effect and we'll be in the top twenty percentile of all the fire departments in Tennessee when we get it. It's going to save about, save about six figures a year on your insurance premiums.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, can I ask one quick question on that? With the new, the Quint, I would look at it and it's extremely nice and just a couple of questions, you know, when will we have to, within reason, replace that vehicle?
About twenty-five years.
And what, how many stories could we effectively fight now with that vehicle?
Effectively, four stories. And let's do, let's do a little geometry here. I know it's a seventy-five foot aerial, but if you've got your building, outside the building, you've got landscaping, sidewalk, your eighteen-foot deep parking spot. So you have to subtract that from that side of the triangle. Realistically, four stories.
And that would help us work the school, Walmart?
School, Walmart. If they come out here and build a Holiday Inn Express or any of the motels that they call, we're ready.
So in essence, we probably could change some of our code restrictions on building. Okay. I'm just trying to throw that out there.
Well, and right now, we're limited to forty-five feet. When you get over fifty, you have to sprinkle the building. So it solves that problem too. So we're ready to go.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chief Harris is kind of like a T-bowler being asked to step up for Babe Ruth, but I'll do my best. He stated that it normally gives you some stats from the previous month and I checked with the emergency operations center over in Franklin and they advised me that we responded to a total of fifteen accidents here in our community. Of those, only seven were on the dedicated city streets of Fairview and out of those seven, we had one personal injury. We had six-hundred-and-ninety-three incidents in which we were involved in with the cooperation of VOC. That includes traffic stops, self-initiated activity that our officers perform and calls for service. On average week, those self-initiated activities and calls for service run between eighty and ninety. So that new fleet of vehicles are getting a pretty good little workout. I would like just comment and just brag a little bit of the number of DUI arrests we make for Department of Twenty-Four sworn officers. It's staggering. What we're finding is more and more people are being somewhat scufflaw because not only are we bringing in DUI arrests, we had five of those out of our fifty-eight arrests last month, but we're finding a large number of unlicensed drivers or drivers that have had their license revoked. And obviously, if they don't take the trouble to get their license and properly register their vehicle, there's a good chance they're not carrying insurance, which is a real hazard to our citizens. So our officers are doing an outstanding job trying to make the place safer for y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank them for their good job.
Just wanted to let everyone know that the, we have another buoy jubilee, Johnny Campbell and the Bluegrass Drifters, Saturday, May third, from two to three, and then Pick and Party After from three to five. Also on Saturday, May third, Barksford Parks, from nine AM to twelve PM. So bring your four-legged critters out. The street department, we are currently still picking up leaves and brush. We'll probably stop picking up leaves in about two weeks. So if everyone could get their leaves to us or out to the road, we'll be glad to pick them up.
You Chipper people have done a great job. I've seen some stuff later in after storms and things that we've had and they've done a fantastic job of getting all that picked up and everything. So whoever's, you got in charge of that or they're in charge of, they're doing a good job to keep it good.
I'll let them know.
Do I have my telephone poles yet for the park?
They're, I think they're growing them still.
They're... Okay.
Wow.
Well, you know my opinion on that.
I do.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hummer, you don't have to get up, stay in your chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. In planning codes department report for the month of April, we issued nine building permits total for total construction value of eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand, fifteen inspections, two COs and one plans review. Also, I'd like to mention that some of the things that are being talked to, that I've talked to people about that are upcoming is a possible new convenience store, another site for fast-paced urgent care, and also there'll be a new sector for Western Woods. So there are things happening there.
Thank you, sir.
Just to comment while you're here, thank you for being here. I know you're relocating, you're here, and I know the reason why. You've got, I believe, your daughter and grandchildren are here.
Yes.
So you were already invested person in this community before you came here, split everybody in... here, split everybody in the know and we appreciate that very much. I've talked to City Manager Hall as far as the going back over and possibly revamping, suggestions for revamping the codes, that's a long tedious job and I want you to be in charge of it. I'll be there because I think with your outside knowledge, it'll be very beneficial and we wanna make it a friendly place to do business and be a homeowner here, as far as safety and everything else goes on top of it. So, thank you again. When your wife gonna be here?
Well, as soon as we can get our house over and burn again.
Okay, good deal. We looking forward to that?
I've already started babysitting, so.
[laughing]
Well, look, look at the difference. You only took a fifty percent pay hike to get to do that.
Well, it's worth it.
Fifty percent decrease, I'm sorry, decrease, not a, the bigger.
Any further staff comments this evening? Item C, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I only have a couple of things I'd like to advise the Board of. This, as was said yesterday, I received back from Ms. Givens' attorney, the settlement and compromise offered duly executed by Ms. Givens and her attorney. As you remember, the Board last meeting approved, the mayor signing it, approved the, the compromise and settlement agreement and the mayor decided that there was no changes. I'm happy to report to you that I received the document back and they executed it exactly as it was presented to them, the way I drew it. The mayor has signed that agreement, the city will keep a copy. I will send a copy tomorrow back to her attorney and then all we gotta do is wait for a few more days for the thirty days from the time we passed the ordinance withdrawing, Givens cut road from the original annexation and then I will send Mr. Humber an email to remind him to have recorded that ordinance and then there's copies that have to be distributed in accordance with the statute and then that issue will be closed. I'm have to report after all this time, that issue will be closed. The other thing that I have to, for the Board tonight, is that today, well, I wanna welcome, of course, Mr. Humber, I've had the pleasure so far of having two meetings with Mr. Humber. He and Mr. Hall came down to my office. We had a rather interesting, very, I thought, informative meeting for me and I hope for him, on some issues and items that we felt was important. He was very cooperative and was very interested in that. And something else, and they're both sitting here, so if I'm saying something they don't agree with, please feel free to interject. We had a meeting this afternoon with the staff to discuss some issues about how things should be done in accordance with the statute and with our municipal ordinances. And, one thing that I am really happy to see, that both of them have expressed to me not only this afternoon, but in the previous meeting, that's not really any of my business. I'm not trying to get into their business, but I was glad to see that both of them, I think, are interested in cross-training the people in, in the various offices, not that someone will be an expert in what the person that's already there that's doing, but when that person's gone to lunch or they're on vacation or they're sick, that everybody at least have some working knowledge of what, in that office, of what the other people are doing. So, that you don't have a situation that, and everybody's had this happen to them, you call some office and say, "Well, I'm sorry, could you call back tomorrow? That person's on vacation and I don't know what's going on." And I was very glad to see that and I think they'd be complimented, complimented for that. That was not my suggestion because that's not what I'm here for, to, to run their departments. I just recognized that that's what they were saying and wanted to advise the Board that I think that's a great idea. For what it's worth, I support that. It was not my idea, but I do think it's something that will speak well and will, will work well for the city. And I wanna welcome Mr. Humber and I, I look forward to working with him. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, I can, I have a question for the City Attorney. Will you go ahead and explain real quick? I've been thinking about the special meeting and, cause what Commissioner Busell said something about we can vote on items right there instead of having to wait and I understand that part, but I just wanted to clarify real quick. On a matter of the budget, there probably will not be a vote because there's phases and we have department heads come, we discuss and we, the one that's left is salary and, um, the, oh, I can't think of what, what am I trying to?
I don't, if I could just add something. I don't see it's like approving the whole budget.
Right.
But, but there may be a request in there and since Chief Cooper got the big new fire, uh, fire truck, then Chief Cooper also asked for three vehicles.
Right.
Uh, and so, we may decide that we're not gonna give Chief Cooper that. So, that decision can be made, whereas in a workshop, you can't even make that decision.
Right.
So, you're, when you get to the big meeting, you have to turn around and go back all through it once again, whereas if we have it in a special meeting and we decide that not this year, we're not gonna do that, we can go ahead and make that decision. So, when we get to the, the final approval stages, we're not rehashing the same old stuff and that way, we won't forget something or we, you know, that sort of thing.
Okay, I just wanted to kinda draw a line in the sand and make sure that we're very clear. I think the idea of the special meeting is a good one. That way, I think it's a common ground. But, I did wanna make sure that we were, you know, we were all clear what we're gonna do and that make sure that it wasn't, if I wasn't done with the budget, like when we discuss things, a lot of times, even if I didn't agree with what somebody was presenting in a workshop, I could have time to research it, look back, cause we don't know what they're gonna present. So, when we're done with the workshop, I could go, "Okay, what are other cities doing? How much is that a reasonable price?" So, I just wanna make sure we're not going to take a system and that we are all on the same page and we, it doesn't mean that we're gonna vote on every item that's presented. It can still be deferred to the final budget decisions. Is everybody on the same?
Commissioner, if I, if I could add something. What you're saying in essence is true. Because you call the special, because you call a special meeting with certain items on the agenda, does not mean that you have to vote to approve those items. You can say, "Okay, we're gonna defer this to the meeting two weeks from now, the regular Board meeting." But, be mindful that a special meeting, of course, the whole Board can call a special meeting, but the only other people can call them is, is the mayor, two Commissioners, or the City Manager. But, also be mindful that on your general meetings, you can add anything to that meeting by majority vote of the, of this Board, except those things that are precluded by statute. You can add at, at a general meeting an annexation issue, for example.
Right.
But, at a special meeting, be careful about what you put on there. If you say you're gonna discuss the budget in general, fine, but if you put on there, "We're gonna discuss the budget as it relates to a specific department" and that's all you've got on there, that's all you can discuss and you will not be able to add anything at a special meeting. If you say you wanna discuss the budget in general and you specifically wanna discuss the Fire Department, then you're fine. You can discuss anything you want, you can take votes or you can not take votes. At a workshop, no vote can be, no decision can be reached other than a recommendation to send to the Board. I would like to say, I still see one place where a workshop might be, off the top of my head, might be advantageous. If this Board wanted to have a joint meeting with another Board that this Board has appointed to discuss something, there wouldn't be any votes taken there anyway. It could be valuable there. But, special meeting is your best way to go on those, I think, because if there's something you wanna take action on, if it's on that agenda, then you can vote and it has all the weight of a general meeting.
Well, and I don't know, I mean, just as far as, I don't think we should throw out workshops as a whole, but I think that in something like this, there's value to be able to televise it and have discussion and then vote. But, I just wanna make sure that when, you know, Brandy goes to prepare the agenda, that we are not setting ourselves up to all of a sudden feel like we have to vote on something because I still would like, there's plenty of items that I will go back and research and I just wanted a, a clear picture of what we were doing.
You, you don't have to vote and you can defer it to a general meeting, you can defer it to another special meeting that that Board wants to call at night.
Right, okay.
But, but no, you don't, just because it's on there, you have the ability to vote on it, you don't have the requirement to vote on it.
Great. I just wanted that clarification.
Anything else?
I, I don't know who's, who's idea was this?
Huh?
Whose idea was this?
Um, the Vice Mayor actually brought it after the, an email about the cancellation of the workshop and so, I was thinking that was a good idea too.
I think it's, I think.
And then I, I know that Commissioner Busell also mentioned something about he would be fine with, you know, doing everything, you know, in the whole scheme of things. There was some kinda communication about the workshop, whether or not we should proceed with it because it was not technically voted on in a meeting. We have voted on the ones for April, but in that discussion, we said May would be determined after we saw where we were in the process. And, I, I believe, I don't wanna speak for Mr. Darty or maybe Wayne can speech up, I think it was the natural progression for Mr. Darty just assumed that we would keep on going cause we weren't done with the budget discussion. So, we were just, it was a technicality, you know, whether or not we approved it or not. And so, when the email came out, that, you know, there was discussion on whether or not to, you know, whether it was approved and then that had to be looked up. So, that's kinda where that stemmed from was just, I think, in the reality of it all. I don't know what you're exactly looking for. I think it was that there was enough conversation about this one workshop that, you know, it was, and it wasn't really, it's just, do we have the workshop or not, you know? So, it's kinda here where that stemmed from.
I'm glad we're doing it. It helps out a little bit of transparency, especially on something as important as the budget. Up until, I don't know, a couple of years ago, it wasn't on the internet. We gotta put on the internet so people could look at it. So, keep in mind, it is on the internet if you ever wanna take a look at it. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Alright, item ten, Communication Mayor and Commissioners.
Did you have anything else, Larry?
Well, you were good, right?
Yes, sir, I'm through. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thanks for asking.
Commissioner Busell.
Thank you. Again, just remind everybody that we have an election on May sixth. Please get out and vote. This election typically doesn't get quite as many participants, but all elections are important. So, I wanna remind you to do that. The other thing is, is sometimes I'm successful at this, sometimes I just make matters worse, but I'm gonna try to clear up a comment that I made last time so that people understand. I mentioned the, the document that wound up in the paper that I had provided to Mr. Terrelli, did I say that right, Al?
Terrelli.
Terrelli, I'm sorry. That was my personal work papers. That was not the city's document. Therefore, asking for that document from the city would get you nothing because they weren't entitled to give it to you. That's why you had to ask me for that document. That's why I made the statement that if you ask the city for the information, the city can charge you for the information. I wasn't gonna charge you if you wrote me at home and said, "Zinditomi," I'd already given it to Al and anybody else that wanted to read it. But, that was my work papers. That was not property of the city. So, when you do make a Freedom of Information request to the city, if the city has to go to an expense to provide that information to you, they are able to charge you for it. It wasn't that I was gonna charge you for my work papers. I was making them available to everyone. But, by the same token, the city couldn't turn around and send you my work papers because they'd be sending something that may or may not, as Al said, wasn't exactly correct by what I said. But, the bottom line is, that was my proprietary right, not the city's. And so, for those people that were confused, I was not saying you'd have to pay for my document. But, if you do come and ask the city for information and the information is not readily available for you, they can charge you to research that information and provide that information to you. And, under, that's under Freedom of Information, that's the federal law. Under the Tennessee Open Records Act, if the information is not readily available, they're not required to compile it for you and put it in a format. So, just to make everybody sure about that, because I, I guess the way I said it, I thought I was being clear, but apparently I wasn't. There's been a lot of conversation about it. So, thank you.
Mr. Carroll.
Thank you. I just wanted to kinda comment. I think, and, yeah, I don't know if it's necessary to do here or what, but the minutes are probably, I know it's your job, but they're, they're painful to sit there, I'm sure, and write word for word. And it was requested probably, I think the mayor, I'm not sure exactly when it was decided that we would transpire base, the whole meetings. So, I would at some point in time like for us to consider maybe going back to the way the minutes were recorded prior. Not that we don't wanna be accurate, but unfortunately, we all don't speak clearly. And, this is a record that will exist for twenty years and in the past, for years, it was basically just, you know, summary of key points. That's why we would look over the minutes to make sure that our points were recorded right. And I, I don't know if the other Commissioners, and maybe we can put it on an agenda item, but I did wanna kinda ask you, Larry, too, cause I know you've had some different, you know what other cities do. Maybe you can give us some kinda guidance and I know, just kinda what your thoughts are on this.
Well, if you're gonna change, first of all, if you're going, obviously, as you know, if you're gonna change the way you keep the minutes, it's gonna have to be put on an agenda item and be discussed.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And brought on by the Board.
I was just.
Some cities, as long as you keep the tape, so that if something came up, you could produce an authentic record, you could have it transcribed. There's some cities that do it verbatim and there's some that do it just getting the essence of the, of the minutes. That would, that would be your call. But, if you do that, you gotta keep those tapes because if, if something comes up and you had to go back, you'd have to produce the actual record and then you'd have something to get it from. Now, do you have to keep them forever? No. You look at the various statutes of limitations. Generally, you'd have to keep them for a probable minimum of three years. I'll look, I would have to look and see if there was something that would require you to keep them longer, but they'd have to be available for that, for that length of time.
Okay. So, when we go to, you've been here a long time, versus how like the Planning Commission does the minutes versus two years past and now that we're doing a transcript, it doesn't, does it matter in this whole scheme of, you know, this was a personal opinion?
The individual Board can determine how they're gonna keep their, their minutes. And it, it has to factually relay what happened. And if it does that, does have to be a verbatim transcript? Generally not. The only time it is, is if you get into a courtroom battle.
Right.
And that's the reason you'd have to keep the tape for some specific time. I'd have to look. I think generally, that's three years, but there may be some instances of when you'd have to keep them longer.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to get into that discussion. My point is, I feel like that when Brandy is, and Teresa too, I mean, not just Brandy, that sometimes when you actually write as we speak, it's painful to read and it's a record. And we do have the tapes that anybody can pull back and read and watch, that, you know, we need to probably put it on a, an agenda item to see what is going on. But, you know, a lot of times where, you know, a whole conversation about Middle Tennessee Electric, you know, is only, is a huge, it is almost a page, you know, it's just sometimes a painful, it's painful to read and it's probably painful for her to do. But, we wanna be accurate. And so, I just, you know, wanted to ask these questions. So, I know that I'll have some opinion and I hopefully I can, people will contact me on whether or not this, you know, if they do have opinion about it, I'd like to hear. You know, do you like the minutes word for word? If that's, you know, what you expect out of the city? And then also, I'd appreciate any comments on that, cause it's not that, you know, I'm trying to say, "Oh, let's not be accurate. I don't want you to have word for word," but let's, I mean-
But let's, I mean, really, the minutes would be written in a way that they had to be exact. So, I don't know. So please feel free to give me your comments on that. It's something that I've kind of been thinking about. And then looking at these huge packets and thinking that, a lot of times, I think of people coming in from the outside, and this is what they're having to sort through, that if we could have it in a clearer picture and less painful. So anyway, give me some feedback on that. The other thing is, I do, May 6th, everybody get out to vote. Doesn't matter who you vote for, it is important for us to do our part. And I just would like to see everybody get out and take the time. It's an election where there's not many things that necessarily will drag people out, but it is important. That truly is our voice, is to get out and vote. And a lot of people won't do it because they think, "Well, you know, my votes don't matter." It does. And so I would like to encourage everybody to take the opportunity. There's a lot of people that fought for that right, and, you know, I just encourage you to do it. Welcome. So glad to have you. Can't wait to hear great things out of the codes departments and different plans you're going to implement and how you're going to, you know, help us move forward. It's very exciting to have you here. Love the fact that you do have a connection, but even if you didn't, I believe you brought, you will bring a whole lot to the city of Fairview. So appreciate that. Sorry, I had to ask a bunch of questions in my, sorry, took a little long.
Commissioner Sutton.
Just a couple of things. As I've been doing so far, if people come down or come down here that are running for political office, I like to introduce them just briefly. So, Mr. Wirtz, if you could just stand up. Running for Fairview City Judge, Mr. Dryer, Lee Dryer is also running for Fairview City Judge. They've showed enough interest to come to these meetings, and I just feel like they should take 10 seconds to be recognized, and we appreciate y'all coming out very much. Very important decision is going to be made coming up in August for that position. That's about all I have. I did owe the part about getting out and voting. It's your responsibility to get out and vote if you're a registered voter. Last time we had an election, because we had a disaster before that, there was only, oh, four years ago, let me back up and say that, there was only a little over 8% of the people voted. In the presidential election, there was about 70, roughly 75% of the people voted. This is a very important election for each and everyone here, because it desires that almost the entire judicial system, all the way up the line from circuit, which nobody's running for, but we've got two general session seats that mean a lot. So get out and vote if you can. If you know a senior citizen that can't get out, ask them if they need a ride. So just go vote whoever you vote for. Go vote. I've also got one shout out to do, and I'm proud of this business here. If you don't mind, I don't do them very often anymore, but, because we've got the thing that comes up, and I think they're going to be up later on. Going postal, Lisa, you want to stand up? I know for a fact she's been working very hard over there for her business, and it's got it open, and I was very impressed when I walked in the other day, that there was two or three ladies in there, and they were just amazed. Just to let people know, that's the position where you can deliver and pick up your UPS packages, your Federal Express packages, your DHL packages, right? Stamps, notary color, copy and packaging. I think you have mailboxes with actual addresses, which is a big plus. So a lot of places, pharmaceutical places, won't send things to a post office box. If you're not secure about getting your pharmaceuticals in your mailbox, they can send them there and they'll take them for you. So just want to wish you good luck in all your endeavor. I know you've been working hard on it, so thank you for shopping local, everybody. That's it. Thank you, sir.
All righty. I guess I will start first with a discussion about the minutes that Commissioner Carroll had going, and I was in a long discussion with a citizen yesterday about this. And tonight, seven of the eight minutes that we approved were true minutes and not dictation. Larry, if this was a request from the mayor years ago to the former city recorder, we never voted on this, we never passed a resolution or an ordinance or anything saying this is how the minutes were going to be kept, it's my understanding that the city manager instructed the recorder to go back to doing it the old way. And seven of the eight we approved this evening were regular minutes.
The old way.
The old way. February 20th meeting has 14 pages. The meeting ended at 8:14. The March 20th meeting ended at 9:20, and it only had four pages. And there were no discrepancy or anything. So I don't think anything needs to be done by resolution. Now, if we want to in the future say we want to go back and have dictation done, then we need to vote on that as a board. But as of right now, I believe the city manager had full authority to instruct her to do that.
Well, it's a simple procedure matter, and the city manager has the authority to do that type of stuff unless the board specifically instructs him. We want it done in, you know, verbatim dictation. Now, that's apparently what happened before. The mayor requested, city manager said do dictation, they did dictation. So if the board wants to leave it to the city manager to do that, then that's his call. But you would need to keep those tapes for, I'll have to look to see exactly the amount of the length of time, because if you, anything that came up that required something with the courts, then it would be a verbatim transcript. Would certainly be desirable. Otherwise, you might have to come back and have another hearing to determine specifically what was said.
And if I can add, Vice Mayor, I don't mean to interrupt you at all, but in the five years that I've been doing this, we've only had one time that we've requested a transcript, which is a word for word of everything that we did. It was just one meeting that we asked them to go back and do it on. Everything else has worked fine, just like it is. And that transcript took Sharon days to complete. And that's just not a good use of time if it's not necessary, in my opinion. So, thank you.
And that's a great point, because we had that done on the Planning Commission minutes, where the city recorder had been doing that in regular minutes each and every time. And it's not necessary, in my opinion, now.
See, if someone came in, if I came in and asked for a records request, you are not required to give it to me in the form I want it. So what you would be required to give me is what you kept. You're not required to prepare a document just because I want it.
Right.
Now, like I said, if it gets to be a subpoena and some sort of a court battle, then you very well may have to go back and reproduce it verbatim.
Yes, sir.
I have listened to Teresa and Brandy for hours on end, going back over the tape, recording these minutes. Teresa, first, I would ask, I said, "Does this go on all the time?" Because I wasn't aware of the verbatim minutes at that time. And that's when she said, "This is what I've got to do." So I started paying attention to how long it was taking her to just produce the minutes. Some of them she took home. Some of them, I know Brandy's took home. Some of them I've asked for special to get them out pretty quick, because I needed them. Well, it does take time to re-listen to that tape. But I made the decision the other day to, since there were so many minutes that we needed to catch up on, and not to say that this was, I think, interfering with other duties that the city recorder has. So that was my reason for that. Also, I'd like to say that until, y'all let me know which way you would like for it to be done. But I feel that as long as we get the target points, the motion's right, and in essence, the way that you state a motion and general discussion on it, I think it would help the Administration Department to proceed with this. As Larry mentioned a while ago, we are cross-training, and there is other duties there that we're trying to accomplish, where it would be more efficient for the entire city. So that's my viewpoint on it, but I'll do what the board says. But I did take that on my plate, so to speak, to make that decision to, and accomplish this many minutes, to get those onto the board. So that's my viewpoint. Thank you.
Along with that, I think in going back to the way that it was done for almost 50 years, that they need to be ready at our next meeting for approval. So the minutes from tonight's meeting need to be on the next agenda for approval, and then we don't get this backlog, and there will be no issues doing it the way that they've been done for five decades, so.
Vice Mayor, may I say one other thing?
Yes.
And then I promise I won't say anything else about this.
You promise?
I promise. There's lots of cities that do that. What the minutes would have to reflect, what you want, if it's not a verbatim transcript, is that it, all the rules of evidence requires that it fairly and accurately reflects the actions that was taken by this board. Now, again, as long as we've got the tapes, and I will look at that to see how long that you have to keep those, in case something came up, you might only need a verbatim transcript of one paragraph, the one that's relevant, if people could go through and get what they needed. But as far as people getting copies of their records, they would have to take the way you prepared it, not in a specific format that they might want. And, you know, there's cities that do verbatim, not very many, because it is a very time-consuming thing, and they generally have better things for the people to do than to spend all the time between meetings preparing the minutes for the next time.
Thank you, sir.
I have one other thing.
Yes, sir.
Vice Mayor, Brandy and I researched the past history of minutes, going all the way back to Kathleen, David Mayberry, and a lot of those minutes didn't, I think the most we saw was three pages of minutes. Some of them were a page and a half. So we've been keeping those for a very long number of years. And so that was one other reason, in my opinion, to let her go forward with what we've done this past time, to accomplish getting this many minutes out. So, and she did come in from class and do those at night after she'd spent all day long at class, if they were in a three-day class this week. So she was, it's not like that they're not doing nothing. They're actually spending a lot of extra time for the city to accomplish these things. Thank you.
I didn't miss a mill, though. All right, two more things. One, would the...
Did we agree to put it on the agenda, or are we just going to make that change?
I just say, until someone decides that they want to go back to the other way, the city manager has said that's how we're going to do it.
There was, I think Commissioner Carroll made it, there was a suggestion about including exhibits or stuff like what Tom gave you, his financial.
Absolutely.
And I endorse that. I think she's right on the mark there.
And I think you'll see that happen.
So if we could maybe get some more of that, that'd be perfect. But I agree with the short minutes. In fact, most nights, I like to forget whatever happened up there.
I have been informed that the Bowie Park summer camps are filling up fast, so if you would like to get your children signed up for that, if you visit the website or stop by the nature center to do that. And the last thing is, I would like to welcome all the U-verse subscribers this evening for our first meeting being broadcast on Channel 99. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Meet in adjourn.